I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul E. Freyus.
Here.
John Kreen.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, all visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems or block incoming emergency vehicles.
Well, since this is a budget meeting, this is Dr. Morrow and Mr. Scheid's meeting, so have at it.
Yeah, so I'm just going to very briefly start with, there's not much of a change from last week's budget meeting. We have been told the legislature is going to come out with a budget as early as this week. We've also been told that some of that $486,000 cut from foundation aid that we had may be restored, which will be nice because it will make up some of the $930,000 that were apart right now between our revenues and our expenditures. You know, but all of that is what we're told. So, we're still in the same waiting pattern that we were in last week when we presented the overall budget inclusive of the cuts and, you know, the raises in the different areas. Today, what we're going to have is our department heads and administrators from the different buildings will be presenting their each individual budget that they kind of oversee in their building and any changes in it and any reasons why. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Scheid, who's going to pull up his presentation and go from there. I'm just going to move out of the way.
Few our backs.
As mentioned, tonight's the administration presentation. First up, we have Mr. Dugon with Facilities.
Oh, yeah, multiple slides. Do you just vote?
All right. Good evening. So, Facilities budget is relatively flat. It's a 0.9% increase. The, you know, of course, our supplies and utility costs are making up the small little increase that we have. So, we have our repair reserve and the transfer to capital accounts. So, we try to do some improvements throughout the year. So, some possible upgrades that we're looking at for the '24-'25 budget is to continue our flooring upgrades, continue the security upgrades, some roof projects, and the, you know, we're always continuing with the HVAC improvements. We have quite a few units that are getting on in age. And all of these projects that we're looking at or potential projects have all been discussed at our Buildings and Grounds Committee, our, with a couple of members of the Board, as well as our architect. So, these are things that are on our list of, on our five-year plan to continue to move forward and continue to upgrade. So, just to give a little rundown of what we've done recently, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the second floor of the high school. We just recently put in the, we had the walls, the tile walls epoxied to match the first floor. So, now the whole high school is uniform with all the tiles on the wall have been epoxied over, and I think it makes a real, real big difference in the look of the school. We also did some new lockers over the summer. Those are the, those are a set of the new lockers. And then, last summer, we also did the new flooring in the elementary hallway, first floor. So, this is like a plank-type flooring. It has many advantages to the flooring that we, the VCT tile that we put down. So, we hope to continue that throughout the building also.
These advantages, these ones that pop up, like those ones that have been on, have they, anybody who's been over the elementary school, you know, saw missing tiles all throughout the hallways and the cafeteria because, for whatever the reason may be, the slabs underneath it were, you know, had too much moisture, whatever it was, we had tiles that pop up all over that building all the time, and we were constantly putting them down, and they really wanted to stay. You know, the biggest of this is the maintenance factor. You know, the amount of time it took for our guys to put those tiles back down, strip them and wax them every year, these tiles just need to be cleaned. They don't get stripped, they don't get waxed, and not one of them has come up since the summer, so.
Just go, just.
Is it a floating tile?
No, it's a glue-based tile.
Yes.
But if, on the second floor, when we ripped, we had to rip out the old lockers. Some of them were on, they weren't built in, they were on pedestals. So, we had to take out some of those pedestals and ripped up quite a few tiles. So, this project for the flooring for the second floor, we're hoping to have done at the April break. So, you know, as long as the contractor can get the material, all the material in on time.
That was included in this.
Yeah, that's included, that's not, that's not, yeah, that's included in this.
That was not an issue. That was one of the, the grounds committee.
This is for the second floor.
We had a handful of loose tiles and bubbles. So, it was an area we were looking at, and then when we took out all the pedestals to get, you know, they put in lockers here many years ago, the really thin ones, they added them. So, what they did is they flush-mounted them, and they built out a pedestal underneath it on top of what was regular hallway floor. When those were removed, that regular hallway floor that was attached to the pedestal for the last 30 years ripped up. So, we have a number of areas upstairs where there's no tile at all. And, you know, with gluing them back down, at best, look like it came in a really bad effort. Never going to look bad.
No. And the tile, that tile's been up there, I don't know, it's got to be 30, 40, 50 years, I guess, maybe more, 60, 70, I don't know. It's been up there a long time.
Long time. I can tell you, it's been a long time.
We talked about this last year, you know, like, it's prudent to build into your budget, just like it's prudent at your home, to maintain this, you know. I mean, we're not putting up disco walls and mirrored lights and, you know, things that we don't need, but, you know, we have 30, 40, 50-year-old floors in our buildings, and if you don't maintain them and replace them, then you're going to have huge problems with them and the millions of dollars to fix them, just like our roofs are on the list because we have some roofs that are getting, we have some roofs that are past their 20-year lifespan.
Oh, okay.
You know, and we've been lucky that they've held out well, but it's time to slowly start replacing them because then you don't have to drop $3 million from a bond to replace your, all of your roofs at the same time.
We've done quite a few over the last few years, but we still, we're down to middle school, you know, the port, not the portable, but the middle school, the pitch roof, and then there's some other sections that, here and there, that we haven't been able to get to yet.
Mr. Dugon, can any of these projected projects for next school year be applicable to the repair reserve?
Well, there's.
Like the floor upgrades, would that be a repair? You know, my repair reserve uses.
I mean, Mr. Scheid can expand, but there's two pools of money that this would come from that's already been approved, right? It's not, it's not something for this, for next year's budget.
And I know certain things can be and can't be used.
Right, so the repair reserve could be used for, just, I would say, all of these projects.
Okay. I know the roof can be issued, issued, an issue if it's a repair or a replacement, so I get the fine line there, but.
But most of them could be, fall under the repair reserve.
Okay. That's what it's there for, right?
Exactly. And nicely, the money's already there, too, so.
I think it's important to note, too, that several years ago, when, with some help from some legislatures, we got the gas main hooked up, that there was a moratorium on, so it allowed us to use the gas instead of oil for the heating in the buildings, and I think that that's been a big savings to the district and the community.
Yeah.
When I see the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, gas prices are going up, but still, it'd be better than having to run it all.
And you can toggle between the two depending on the price, except if the temperature falls below a certain.
The elementary school, we have to, we have to switch over when National Grid tells us.
And it's a temperature, right, if the temperature?
It's all temperature-based, yeah, because it's demand. They want to make sure there's demand for other, for everybody, you know, for all the community, I guess, not just.
In your house. We have government buildings that have the ability to go to oil. When it gets really cold, they require us to switch to oil for a certain period of time, only if the building was built.
It's that building, it's not this building.
Yeah, this building was built long enough ago that my grandfather did, so we're not ever required to switch.
But you still need the fuel oil.
But we are in the elementary school, which makes numerous jobs.
Switched quite a bit last year. This year, maybe once, twice, we've had to switch over. But last year, we had some stretches. We were running on fuel oil about six, seven days, which is a lot for, for what we have to, you know, typically, it's only like two days. Last year, we had a couple of really cold snaps.
It's also not great for old boilers.
No.
Oil runs much harder on boilers.
No, it's dirtier, it's, you know.
And the fact that ours are old and we're looking to try to replace them already, and both of them have broken down this year at different times, you know, we're lucky we didn't have to switch for seven days for oil.
Yeah, absolutely, 100%.
It would have been a big problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So, similar to what Anthony said, the elementary budget is remaining relatively flat. All of our current budget codes are being maintained, all of our programs are being maintained. The overall increase is 0.57%. And I put some pictures in to show some of the things that we have been doing this year. So, we have, after-school activities are continuing. That's to the left, I'm sorry, that's in the middle. On the left, we have the summer program, the Summer Enrichment Program, which is very popular. Those are two of the kids from last summer. And then, there was just this really cute first grader who read me a story that I couldn't help but put her picture in here because she's cute. So, there's really not much to talk about with the elementary budget, but everything, nothing is being cut, everything is continuing.
Thank you.
We're good? All right?
Good evening, everybody. I don't have any cute first graders like Ellen does. We have cute teenagers. So, secondary, all of our budget codes, programs, and offerings are being maintained, which is phenomenal. Over the last six years or so, we have taken a huge initiative to include student voice in our courses, in our electives, course trends, our clubs and activities, and it has really, I believe, shifted participation numbers for our different electives, our different courses. We have higher enrollment numbers in our AP classes, our college enrolled classes. The students feel heard, and it's really great. We've utilized surveys, we've utilized their student government classes, and I'm not going to say that we have a flat budget. We have a decrease at the high school, no offense to everybody else, of a 0.75%. There was a phrase that I learned when I came here that was preserving the past but finding the future. And, you know, the reason I have these photos up is we have a very well-established and renowned Ratsi program for many, many years. We have students on the right that are taking their boater safety test, which is so unique to Southhold. And then, in the middle there, we already have a brand-new esports gaming club for both our middle and high school students that is already top-five in the state. So, we are holding on to the things that make us unique and successful here in Southhold, but always looking for ways to advance us and meet the student needs and meet their voices and listen to them. Any questions?
Why are you looking at me?
You're the president, so.
I'm writing one down.
I appreciate that.
And I'll get back to you on some of them.
Great. Thank you.
Totally unprepared. Not totally, I'm half-unprepared.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Next up, we have.
It's me.
Yeah, Mr. Scheid. He works out a lot.
Yeah, I would like to take my opportunity right now just to thank all the administrators. They work very hard and make my job a lot easier by being very prudent and instrumental in keeping their budget in line and working hard, again, to keep the percent increase low, if not negative, so thank you. Mr. Flanagan could not be here, so I'm just going to go over the athletic budget. He did have an overall budget increase of 4.73%. It may seem like more than, say, a 2% increase, but a dollar man, it's only about a $28,000 increase overall. Some of the key areas that there was increases is chaperoning, which unfortunately, in the past couple of years, the budget hasn't been keeping up with what we've been paying for chaperones to make sure that students are properly supervised. So, we just need to try and get that more in line to what we actually spend each year for chaperoning. Officials, too, we have really no control over official fees. This year, we did see, or next year, the potential spike in the, in the rates from Section 11.
Everybody saw the paper we started, the officials this year, and they ended up giving them, you know, an ample raise this year and next year. Well, all of that stuff is paid for by the school districts, you know, like Section 11, Section 11 hands the money to the referees after we hand it to them, that's the way it goes. So, those increases were then passed on to us, and that's, that's a large number, you know, it, you know, is a fairly decent increase. And I'm not saying that it's deserved or undeserved, you know, like, that's a, it's a hard job, you know, to ref nowadays, but, you know, that number does not fit into a cap, and it's not a small number, and it's, and, you know, it's like, it's like when your insurance goes up, you have no, there's no conversation or negotiating about it. This is an increase, and that's the way it goes. So, yeah, that's what that looks from.
And while I understand it, the section should certainly understand the cap that we're under.
Yeah, and the section.
But I mean, they're.
You know, and I happen to sit on the Section 11 Finance Committee, and the truth is, you know, like, they, both of the people that run Section were athletic directors in school districts. They completely understand that we're all trying to work with that 2%, 2.5%, 3% that we have when it comes to the cap and the allowance. But the fact is, if they didn't make a deal with the officials, we wouldn't have seasons, we wouldn't have seasons this year. And it's getting harder and harder every year to get officials. They advertise extensively every year because you just can't get them, so, you know, I don't think, I think their hands were kind of tied.
I understand it, just timing.
Next up, Dr. Semenati, PPS.
So, this is the Pupil Personnel Services budget. These are all the departments that it encompasses. It's all under the umbrella, hence my little umbrella there. So, my budget is going up just a little bit, by 1.69%. I think I've shared over the years in my presentations that the greatest driver of the budget in PPS is when we have students in out-of-district programs. This year, which is pretty unique for us, it's probably the biggest number we've seen in a while. We do have three students in therapeutic residential settings throughout the state, and we also have three students with disabilities in a special education program, actually at the West Hampton Center at Eastern Suffolk Bosse's. So, tuition, services, transportation can get pretty costly, so that's what represents that budget increase there. I do want to point out that despite this increase in the numbers of students in out-of-district programs, we still are able to maintain the full continuum of programs and services that benefit our students and all of our diverse learners. I've been, I attend quite a few meetings with guidance directors and ENL directors and directors of special education and the trend, and I'm sure Dr. Morrow and your superintendent conversations and groups. We are seeing declining enrollment, certainly on the North Fork, South Fork, Long Island, New York State, for sure. But what's interesting is that we're in, we've been seeing over the last few years an increasing number of English language learners, an increased number in students with disabilities, specifically students with autism spectrum disorders. And we've also seen our cultural diversity, specifically here in Southhold, definitely change a little bit, our demographics. When I first started here, most of our students were from Central America, our English language learners from Guatemala, El Salvador, and that's been really changing. We have students now from Asia, from the Middle East, from, you know, Ukraine, from Russia, from really, you know, Eastern Europe. So, our diversity is expanding, our English language learners, the numbers are expanding, our students with disabilities are expanding. So, a kind of, our, my office is quite busy despite the declining enrollment that we are seeing in our numbers.
Like, the students with disabilities, it seems to be happening earlier and earlier. We have a lot of kids that come to us already classified on autism spectrum disorder, which is uncommon. It used to be that, you know, kids would start in school, and they might struggle, and then they went through the process of being evaluated, but we now, it's not uncommon for us to get between six or eight students that come in with a very elaborate classification. Do you happen to know offhand what the percent of our specialized population is in our ENL, and are they separated? They're separated.
They're very different, yeah. It's interesting because in other places, they talk about, you know, combining the two populations, but they're actually very different populations.
Right, because not all ENL students.
Because English language learners are, you know, their, language is their greatest barrier, but students with disabilities have disabilities.
Exactly.
You know, being an English language learner is not a disability.
Right.
It's actually an advantage later on in life to be.
Do you know the percentage offhand?
Um, I do know.
You can get back to us on, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because I know it's grown over the years.
The English language learners, we actually have 102. I had to look this up yesterday. I can't tell you what the percentage is off the, because I don't know what today's enrollment number is.
18%?
It was between 17 and 20.
Okay. Thank you.
Just recently. It does change because it goes up and down.
Of course, yeah.
But I can tell you that it was 15 when I got here.
Yeah.
It's between 17 and 20 right now.
Right.
Okay.
The special ed, I don't know. The English language learner ones, we have a report that goes into the state tomorrow, so I saw that.
Special ed is, I would, I would guess, the last few years, it, you know, was around the state average, around 14% or so, but being that our enrollment is declining and students with disabilities is going up, you have that inverse relationship, so I would imagine that there will be an increase just because of that relationship with the numbers, but I will definitely get back to you on that. And to Dr. Morrow's point, yes, we are, the students with autism spectrum disorders, just in our, in our self-contained classes at the elementary school, the numbers, I'm here almost 10 years, and it's the highest numbers I've ever seen. And it's definitely, it's not just in Southhold, it's across Long Island. There is, you know, some schools of, there are some schools of thought that it could be related to the pandemic, but there's certainly, there's not, there's just not enough data or research out there yet to support that. So, but it is definitely a trend that we're seeing across Long Island.
I mean, one of the, I don't know if I'd say benefits, but one of the unintended outcomes of the fact that our population, we have more students coming in with more, you know, documented and severe needs, we have a, we have more of a continuum, so less of our students are leaving the district. Like, we have three this year, which is a large number. Well, we have two in Bosse's placements, we have three residential, residential.
Three Bosse's.
Yeah.
Three Bosse's.
So, we have three, and then we probably have another 14 to 16 to 18 in very rigid classes that would have been out in other places. But since we have enough to actually have this continuum, they can stay in district. When they stay in district, it's better for them, they can be involved in a lot more things in our school district. It's also better for Southhold because, you know, an in-district class that might cost you $300,000 in salaries, it costs you $60,000 per student to send out. So, if you have eight students in that class, you know, you're, it's a $300,000 difference, you know, at a good time, you know. And it's also much better for kids because they're not sitting on a bus for 50 minutes going, you know, to a learning center that's somewhere else.
Right. Like, our students are transported, the Bosse students are transported to West Hampton, which is, you know, 45 minutes to an hour easily each way.
So, since we have, since we have a full continuum here, only the students that really need more than what we can offer them, which is very few, go to outside placements. The rest, we have BCBA's in district, we have life skills classes in district, we, you know, we maintain them all in the district. So, it's a much better place for them because they're not, again, sitting on a bus for two hours a day. And then, it's also much, it's much better for Southhold because it really adds to your community in the building, and financially, it's a better option than sending kids out.
So, to that end, as Dr. Morrow pointed out, we do offer the full continuum of programs and services here for our students with disabilities. Over the last few years, we've built up just a lot in our, I would say, our infrastructure in special education. We have full speech department, OT, we have physical therapy, we have counseling provided by school psychologists and social workers, we have integrated classrooms, special class settings, we have our life skills program with a full transition component. So, we have really robust, wonderful programs that meet the needs of our students with disabilities, and we also have worked really hard over the last few years in building up our multi-tiered system of support for our diverse learners who are not identified in special education. So, we, we've built up a whole system and processes with our teams at both the elementary school and the secondary school to, to basically meet the needs of learners who are not identified in special education by brainstorming different strategies and interventions that we're able to provide by our staff at the building level. So, even though the numbers are increasing and going up, this is helping to keep our, to meet the needs of learners without that extra referral to special education, and we're doing a really good job of that. I just wanted to point out that with our, we have an annual financial commitment to the North Fork Behavioral Health Coalition that you may recall was started with David Gamberg and other superintendents several years ago, and because of this commitment and this coalition and this partnership, for the first year in eight years, we have seen a significant decrease on the North Fork in crisis intervention referrals, significant decrease in students being transported to psychiatric emergency rooms. So, that's been wonderful for us, and, and I also attribute that to our new counseling center that really supports the academic and social emotional needs for all of our students. There's full access for all of the students in our counseling center to guidance counselors, school psychologist, social worker, or transition counselor. So, it's really, like I said before, we've really built up like the infrastructure of all these, not just our special ed programming, but all of these programs to meet all of students' needs. And so, I just wanted to share all that with you because despite the trends and these increasing numbers that we're seeing across the board, across Long Island and New York State, we're doing some really fabulous things here thanks to your support of our budget over the years and PPS for all the programs that we provide for our students. So, just want to highlight some positives.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Carter and Chuck?
I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I may email you some because of specifics, and we expect the answers to be readily available.
Absolutely. And then, we, we have one more budget presentation where you kind of break out all the groups and their numbers, is that correct, Chuck? And then, we put a.
Exactly correct. We have one more, and we'll have us, as you mentioned earlier, we do hope to have the, a solid revenue budget soon, in which case, then, we can work on matching up with the expense budget, but the next presentation will have a balanced budget and detail of basically where we stand.
So, we don't anticipate you're saying the cap, correct?
No.
Right.
That's what I want to hear.
No, we're not. There are, I saw the stats for Long Island.
I know we still have a gap we have to.
We have gaps to make up, you know. Our expenditures in some areas are, you know, we have a $700,000.
April 10th, right?
I think it's April 10th.
April 10th is our next one, and then, I think, the 17th or.
It's our regular meeting, and that's when we'll adopt the budget.
That's when we adopt, yeah. And we'll be balanced by then, and we'll be under the cap. But, you know, we have, and we talked about this the last two years during the budget process, you know, there's going to be a financial hit to the last four years. That's going to come. There's been, we were paying people not to work, we were handing out millions of dollars in grants, and, you know, it's going to, you know, eventually, you got to pay, that's the way it works, you know. You can borrow as long as you like, eventually, you have to pay. We've prepared for that well, so it's not going to impact us adversely when it comes to what we have for our kids. You know, it's not going to impact us adversely in maintaining our buildings and, you know, having all the programs that we had. Now, the reality is, we don't have all the programs that we had because we just don't have the number of kids we had. Like, we have a couple of teams that are probably not running this fall just because we don't have the enrollment for them. We had, this spring, we had that in the fall. We have three less elementary classroom teachers than we had the year before I got here because we just don't have that many kids. We have 38 kindergartners, and this year's UPK is smaller than last year's UPK. So, the, the expectation is that. Like we have a couple of teams that are probably not running this fall just because we don't have the enrollment for them, this spring, we had that in the fall. We have three less elementary classroom teachers than we had the year before I got here because we just don't have that many kids. We have 38 kindergartners, and this year's UPK is smaller than last year's UPK. So the expectation is that next year's kindergarten will be smaller than the 38.
Can I just point, on that note, many years ago, well, not that many years ago, we did see the declining enrollment, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, we saw that the declining enrollment was going to occur because I think, in comparison to some districts, it wasn't like that, it was a gradual decline. And our plan at the time was through attrition and through retirements was not to replace people. So we did kinda have a plan in place that we've been following, I think I'm right, right, guys? That, because we didn't wanna lay off staff in the middle of any given year or at the end of any year, or cut programs, so we felt like if we can hang on there and if our community supports us, we'll hang on there as for as long as we can. And please correct me if I'm wrong or weigh in on that, that that, before Dr. Morrow got here, well, before COVID, because that kind of just threw everybody in a tailspin for a few years, that kind of was the plan that I recall.
And it's the process we follow with, you know, well, we have retirements anywhere. We look at our department, we look at our positions, and we look at our enrollment and how they're staffed, and then we make decisions based on that. Now, we want to keep all the programs we have. They're not gonna look exactly the same as they were all the time, but we wanna keep all the, we wanna right-size our population through retirement. That's really the best way we can do it. I've done it both ways, unfortunately, because, you know, every 10, 12 years, you have one of these years where everything gets cut so dramatically that you have no choice because, you know, most of, most of where we spend our money is in people in school districts. That's the reality of it, that's the majority of every budget. So when you have these years where you have massive cuts that are never going to change, you have to let go people. And I've been in the midst of letting go of 80 people, I've had to sit and tell them. It is significantly more humane and much nicer to be able to do it through attrition when people retire. I've done it both ways in different places, and here, luckily, I've only done it one way. And we, you know, we've been lucky that we've had people go almost right when, you know, could we have changed numbers earlier? Maybe, but we were so close or just won over with kids or things like that, and that we didn't have to. And it, you know, it allowed us to do it through retirements and attrition, which really is a much more humane way of doing it. And we haven't had any impact, our elementary class sizes are the same average class sizes as we had 10 years ago, even though we have three less teachers. And in our high school, we're starting to see it with, we had a lot of six periods when I came here. I think we had 27 teachers teaching six periods, or 47, I can't remember the exact number. That's down six or eight already, and in the next four years, our high school's gonna drop 83 kids. You know, we, we have the grades coming into ninth grade, and the grades going out in 12th, average 20 less over the next four years. With that, we will lose additional periods, and we may lose clubs or teams or things like that because they all run based on enrollment. The opportunities will all be there. We've made very sound business decisions since well before I was ever here. The reserves that were developed and put in place here are extremely beneficial to us when we budget. You know, so I don't think that we will severely impact what we offer to our children, you know, over the next five, six years, as we have, as we go through a difficult budget time. And then, you know, a handful of years from now, budget will get better like it always does in education. You know, it's a cyclical thing. This is probably the third down cycle that I've been in, and third, you know, they come, you know, the whole cycle takes like about 10 years. So that tells you how long I've been in education. So, you know, I think that we'll manage well. I know that this year, we can close our gap without impacting our students adversely in any way. You know, the only time we have an adverse impact is when we just don't have enough kids to run something. And then there's a few kids that wanna be in it, and we just don't have, you know, we don't have the ability to do it. And that, you feel bad for, but, you know, you can't have a basketball team with four kids, you can't have a baseball team with eight kids, you just can't, you know, you can't do those things. So we still offer it, and we try to, but we're not able to. So, any other questions for Chuck? All right.
Thank you to the administrators for all your hard work. It's not a real meeting, so we don't, do we need a adjournment?
I think you do, just because there's a court.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.